I will now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by city council and staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by roll call. City Clerk, will you please take role?
Yes, Mayor Starsek.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Kalmak. Councilmember Vera Papa.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications? City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, we received one supplemental communication.
Okay. Oral communications. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. No other business shall be considered. All email comments the City Clerk received before the start of the meeting were distributed to the city council and made available to the public on the city's website. Email comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, Mayor, we received eight emailed comments. They have been distributed to city council and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to new business. Item A, consideration of COVID-19-related temporary outdoor dining retail and service allowances. City Manager Ingram, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Before I turn this item over to our Community Development Director Les Johnson, I thought it would be really important for us to briefly summarize some of the actions that the council and city staff has taken over the past few months to support our local businesses through ongoing and very challenging circumstances. As the council will recall, at the June 8th council meeting, the council approved temporary business reopening support measures to allow a temporary outdoor dining administrative review process for temporary outdoor dining on public sidewalk areas within the Main Street business corridor, as well as on private property in close proximity to restaurants throughout the community. And you authorized the waiver of all application fees. Additionally, the council approved the establishment of a marketing and promotional campaign of $30,000, which is being used to promote Seal Beach business as well. To date, over 20 outdoor dining permits have been issued, the majority of which are restaurants located on Main Street. And then two weeks later, at the June 22nd council meeting, the city council approved the Small Business Relief Grant Program, providing the opportunity to deliver $562,000 in CARES Act funding throughout one-time grants of up to $10,000 to qualified Seal Beach businesses to provide immediate relief as a result of hardships due to COVID-19. As a result of that action, the city formed a partnership with the Orange County Small Business Development Center, a nonprofit that is administering the grant application process on behalf of the city. The city and the Orange County Small Business Development Center hosted two Small Business Relief Grant Program webinar workshops on Wednesday, July 8th, and this week on Tuesday, July 14th, to ensure that small business owners have a better understanding of the grant program and the application process. Wanted an opportunity, Mayor, to thank you as well for participating and representing the city at both of these webinar workshops.
You're welcome.
The grant application period closes tomorrow, Friday, July 17th, at 5:00 PM. And the awarding of grant funds is anticipated to occur at the end of July or early August. To date, we've received over 20, excuse me, over 50 grant applications. The city established and has been staffing two communal dining areas within the Main Street corridor for Main Street restaurant customers over the past two weeks. The dining areas are available and staffed by city staff Wednesday through Sunday from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. One location at Eisenhower Park and a second location in the public parking lot at Main Street and Electric Avenue adjacent to Bistro Saint Germain. And actually, the Eisenhower Park location, we intend to expand seating capacity there at no additional cost to the city due to increased demand. And now tonight, staff is before you to discuss a recommendation regarding outdoor dining parklets on Main Street. And as the council will recall, at the June 8th council meeting, staff provided the council with a brief update on the concept of temporarily utilizing on-street parking for dining in downtown commercial areas. As a result of that discussion, I really wanted an opportunity to acknowledge the significant amount of work that's taken place in a short amount of time in order for us to be in a position to be able to present you with a recommendation tonight based on what is feasible for Seal Beach, knowing that we have one three-block downtown Main Street. So what may be working for outdoor dining in other cities, even other coastal cities, may not be viable for our Main Street. Finally, I would like to thank and acknowledge Mayor Pro Tim Kalmak and Councilmember Vera Papa, both of who serve as council representatives on the Main Street Revitalization Committee as they have spent a significant amount of time over the past several weeks with staff and with business owners to discuss and analyze the concept of outdoor dining parklets to support restaurants on Main Street, including options that would be optimal for our downtown corridor. I would also like to especially thank and commend Les Johnson for the significant amount of work he has devoted to this important effort in a short amount of time, especially given his concurrent oversight of the Small Business Relief Grant Program to distribute 562,000 in CARES Act funding to qualified Seal Beach businesses, the outdoor dining permit program, and the outdoor communal dining area program, all in addition to the oversight of both the planning department as well and the day-to-day activities in his department. I also know that tonight's effort specifically required the timely assistance and guidance of our city attorney Craig Steele, the Coastal Commission, and the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, not to mention the many hours Les personally spent talking to restaurant owners about outdoor dining parklets as an additional resource to support businesses, to ensure there was feedback and input from restaurant owners regarding tonight's proposed recommendation to you. So again, I really felt it was important in introducing this item that we summarize all of the important actions that the council and city staff has taken over the past few months to support our local businesses through the ongoing impacts of the economic shutdowns. And with that, I'll now turn the presentation over to Les Johnson, our Community Development Director. Les?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram, and good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Next slide, please. The COVID-19 pandemic has impacted each and every one of us, but it especially has had a negative impact upon virtually every one of our Seal Beach businesses. Back on March 19th, the state required the closure of all nonessential businesses in order to control the spread of this virus. Following approximately two months of closure, most businesses were allowed to conditionally reopen in May. The restaurants were allowed to reopen and limited to less than 50% indoor occupancy due to the social distancing requirements, and also outdoor dining was encouraged at that time. In early June, city council took action to allow the temporary dining on private property and also on public sidewalks for the Main Street corridor. And then additionally, city council also directed staff to establish the two communal dining areas that are now in operation at Electric Avenue and at Eisenhower Park. Next slide. As the city manager noted, we've issued over 20 temporary outdoor dining permits to date. Most of those dining, outdoor dining permits have been issued to businesses on Main Street. The feedback we received has been positive, and a number of restaurants have really gone the extra mile to try and create an inviting and safe dining experience for their customers. The two temporary communal dining locations are now operating. Eisenhower Park has been well-received, and the site is seeing steady use, especially this past weekend. The Electric Avenue site has been much limited use, and staff is proposing that we conclude that operation and focus our efforts on the Eisenhower Park site and expand it, as was previously mentioned. Due to the increase in the COVID-19 cases, Governor Newsom issued an order on July 1st to close indoor restaurant dining. The governor subsequently issued an order on July 13th that once again closed fitness centers, nail salons, hair salons, churches, and a number of other business sectors. Both orders have had a significant impact on a large number of our small businesses here in Seal Beach. Next slide. So with the, with the state's order, the increase in outdoor dining has been significant. The interest in, I should say, in outdoor dining has been significant. Restaurants are definitely desiring to see outdoor spaces established that are adjacent to their business in order for table service. Many of our restaurants provide direct table service, and they are also serving alcohol. And ABC is granting the outdoor service to occur, but it has to be in close proximity to the restaurant, and they are approving that accordingly. The Main Street corridor itself is the most challenged due to the lack of space available to many of our restaurants. While other locations have private space that they can utilize, many of our Main Street businesses have nothing more than the front of their store and the sidewalk space that's available immediately adjacent. Utilizing our Main Street parking spaces immediately adjacent to those businesses seems like the most logical progression in being able to allow for additional dining space. Main Street itself has 170 on-street parking spaces. Most of those spaces are angled parking. There are a handful of parallel parking spaces within the 300 block near PCH. There are 32 restaurants within the Main Street corridor, and those restaurants represent just right around 28% of the total businesses that we have within that corridor. Next slide, please. What we are proposing tonight is the consideration to allow up to two parking spaces per business to be utilized for outdoor dining. That space, if combined, would allow for up to 320 square feet of area to be utilized. And depending on the configuration, it could accommodate up to 16 customers with proper social distancing being in place. What we are proposing also is that there are a handful of restaurants along the Main Street corridor that have their own private parking area. And the consideration here would be to exclude those from that allowance as those restaurants have already established those spaces. So for example, the Hangout, Seal Beach Grill, and Hennessy's have already established outdoor dining within those areas. And the focus is trying to be able to provide additional outdoor dining space for those restaurants that have very limited opportunity for such. There are also three restaurants on Ocean Avenue, but they would be able to utilize the parallel parking spaces directly in front of their restaurants. And those, those spaces are much larger than the standard angled parking on Main Street. So staff has identified the likelihood of one parking space being available for each of those three restaurants. That space, though it's smaller, could accommodate approximately 12 customers in each of those spaces. If all of the eligible restaurants along the Main Street corridor participated in this effort, there would be 44 spaces utilized on Main Street and three spaces on Ocean Avenue. With the number of spaces that identified, 170 spaces, this represents just right at 26% of all of the Main Street parking, leaving 126 spaces still available. This is an important point to consider as balancing the parking needs for all of the Main Street corridor businesses is the effort underway. Another key point is that parking spaces would still exist throughout the three-block segment of Main Street. Though there are a few locations with restaurants next to one another, most are separated enough to, that will, that will allow for parking to be, exist between the different dining areas. Next slide. Safety is critically important, and measures must be put in place to ensure that a safe environment exists. The city would be responsible for installing traffic barricades between the street drive aisles, drive aisles of Main Street and the dining areas themselves. We would also, well, this would provide protection that's necessary from vehicles, between the vehicles and the dining patrons, but it would also deter pedestrians from crossing the street at, at those dining parklet areas as we want to make sure that they're utilizing the proper locations to cross the street. We're also proposing to place a decorative cover over each barricade in order to provide a positive and consistent aesthetic. Also, we don't want to make it look like a construction zone with a lot of orange barricades along our beautiful Main Street. So we are working on some designs and the ability to establish a cover, again, that would provide a very positive aesthetic environment. It would also be able to include a small location if the restaurant chooses to be able to put some signage on it as well. With regards to the dining space, each restaurant would be responsible for furnishing that space and caring for it. It's really important, too, that that space is maintained properly as we have to make sure that we're not introducing debris and garbage into our gutter system. So it's really imperative that they are managing it properly on a daily basis and throughout, and throughout its use. Each, each restaurant would have the option to build a platform if they so desire. And an example of a platform, if you've seen them, a number of the parklet type uses that are being constructed in the Second Street corridor of Long Beach and a few other areas are using a platform system. That would be an option that could be constructed, or they could simply choose to place tables and chairs directly onto the parking spaces themselves. However, we would want, we need to make sure and would ensure that ADA compliance is met with each business. So a business may have to provide ADA access to that, to that dining area if they do not have another option available on a sidewalk or in proximity. We would also be requiring an application to be submitted and an encroachment agreement be established. And the application would be similar to the current outdoor dining application that's in place for, and we have been utilizing for the other opportunities. We are also proposing that this be a temporary use, that it be allowed for a period of six months in that the matter would be brought back to city council in December to revisit and determine if it was, needs to conclude or be extended longer. Next slide. The city cost for the project is identified to not exceed $75,000 for the six-month period. That cost is to cover all of the barricades that will be established, the coverings, as well as a few other miscellaneous expenses associated with this operation. We are proposing, as I mentioned, order to modify the communal dining by closing the Electric Avenue location and adding tables to the Eisenhower Park site, and that would provide a cost savings of about $40,000. I'd like to also note that that $40,000 includes the fact that we have been able to save money with the operation that's existing now by cutting costs in a variety of areas and locations. So the $40,000 isn't exclusive just to the Electric Avenue closure. It's also with other cost savings we've been able to find in, take care of here in the last few weeks. We would continue to monitor the communal dining use and make adjustments as deemed necessary going forward. And we're also looking into promoting the activity on Main Street through an alfresco-type promotion that would be getting specific to Main Street, but we also will continue to be focusing on promoting all of our Seal Beach businesses here in the near term. I also want to noted, note to you that we have reached out recently and spoke with the Coastal Commission with regards to this proposal. And based on what we've identified to them to date and what's been presented to you, they are generally in agreement with this, that we will need to correspond with them should council, city council approve this tonight. Next slide. Most recently, this past Monday, a new state order was issued that closed fitness centers, nail salons, hair salons, churches, and a few other business sectors. These, these were closed with the option to be able to rein open if they're able to modify their activity to operate outside. I do want to mention there's one exception to that currently in existence, and that has to do with the various salons. There is an effort underway by the cosmetology, cosmetology, apologize, can't remember the name of the entity, but the Cosmetology Group, if you will, in trying to request of the governor to provide an exception for salons to be able to operate outdoors. A number of businesses have inquired with us since this information came out on Monday and have expressed interest in moving their operations outdoors. Those have primarily been cosmetology-related, but we've also heard from a few of our local fitness centers who would like to have the opportunity to utilize certain spaces to do their fitness classes outdoors. In light of this, we're proposing a temporary outdoor activity permit be provide, be established in order to allow the temporary placement or location of merchandise or services outdoors. This would be viewed on a case-by-case basis and would be available for existing Seal Beach businesses while indoor use is not allowed or occupancy is restricted. Again, the application process would be very similar to the temporary outdoor dining permit process we currently have, and there would be no fee associated with that, that permit application. And again, they would be considered on a case-by-case basis. Next slide. And with that...
Did Les fall off audio? Yeah, I can't hear him.
Yeah, so Mayor, with that, it appears that the last slide of Les's presentation has to do with the recommendation that's before you tonight. It's also identified on your staff report. And so in the interim, till we get him back on, on the Zoom meeting, what it, what we probably could do is turn the item back over to council. Mayor, maybe you could hold off for maybe just one minute till we can get Les back on the line. And then, and the council could address specific questions that you have of staff at this point.
Sure, that's fine.
I'm sorry, Mayor, am I, am I back on now?
You're back, I can hear you.
Oh, my apologies. I didn't know I lost connection with you.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure where I, where I lost connection with you.
We're just on the last slide, recommendation to adopt Resolution 7051.
Okay, I just wanted to, again, that's staff's recommendation before you, and that concludes my report, and happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will start with council, I actually, I'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Kalmak.
Thank you. Les, thank you very much for a very concise report, and it's obvious that you have spent a huge amount of time in putting this all together so quickly, given the circumstances. One question that I have concerning the off-Main Street corridor restaurants or other businesses when we get to talking about that, will the city be placing any of the barriers for those restaurants as well? As an example, Finn Bars, let's say, over in the Pavilion Center, who's planning to have a, you know, outdoor dining? Should he be planning on, on us providing that or providing his own barriers?
To date, we have not considered the placement of the barricades on private property. That's certainly something that could be considered going forward, but at this point in time, you know, our focus has been the liability concern with regards to within our public right of way and making sure that that's properly secure. But certainly, if there's a need or an interest there, we could discuss that, but that has not been our focus to date.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. That's all the questions at the moment that I have. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Vera Papa, did you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Les, thanks for the information and all the updates. I really appreciate all the hard work you do. I know you spent significant time out there and with the, with the public and with the business owners and getting this all organized. I do appreciate it. I'd be interested in, in your feedback when you visited or you called the other cities. I mean, how, how was the success rate? Did they say anything about that? Or was it more logistical-type conversation as far as putting up these parklets, if you will?
It was more logistical. The, most of the cities that I visited, the, the focus has been on very focused sections of communities with street closures. So for example, the city of Orange, Old Town Orange, a very small half a block, quarter block section in Fullerton that was closed. But I did have the, the opportunity to visit Laguna Beach and obviously several locations in Long Beach. But Long Beach has been the one that's probably seen the largest focus on parklet in utilization of public parking, whereas the other municipalities, from what I've seen, have, have seen a limited amount of parklet activity and interest and have focused in on, in a very strategic, if you will, areas or defined areas within their downtowns for either closing or doing something very unique. So again, my focus has been more on logistics. I have not had a chance to talk with any business owners in those areas to find out. I would like to point out, though, that, for example, in Long Beach, it's my understanding that the parklet designs or the use of the parking spaces is requiring them to, to build a platform in order to be able to utilize that space. So there's quite a cost with that. We're obviously not proposing that word. That's an option. And it may be, it may be something that a business sees as important, but we're letting them decide that. And that was mainly due because most cities are not requiring it there. Be it San Clemente and what they're doing, where it's just similar to what we're proposing, and a lot of the other communities that have done either partial or full-street closures, they're just allowing for the, the dining to occur right on the street. Many are putting down, I would call it a green carpet or some type of a, of a treatment to separate the asphalt from the, you know, from the dining tables and chairs. But it's been pretty straightforward and simple in most of the jurisdictions with regards to the establishment of, of the temporary dining, again, from what I've experienced to date.
Yeah, thanks. I did have the opportunity to go to some of the adjacent cities and see some of the things that they did, basically on a drive-by basis. And even here in our hometown with the communal dining, dining areas, it did seem like Eisenhower Park was a little busier, if you will, than, than the other location. So I think kind of isolating that or, you know, moving the forces, so to speak, over there is a good idea and a good option for us. I think that was one of the options that we had was to be that, have that flexibility for that. So I think that's a really good idea. And it seemed like in those... And it seemed like in those other cities, I think I went by one a few weeks ago, and they were literally putting up the barricades as I was driving by. Are the parameters for those in the permit or how does that work with the individual businesses? Do they, do you have an outline or guideline? I don't want to go over it now, I'm just, and I'm sure you do, I'm just kind of curious about how that works.
Sure, absolutely. So we would, we would have, we would have an application submitted. They would identify the location, we would go out and, you know, verify the, the spot. If there would be a requirement for an encroachment agreement to be entered into. And that's really intended just, you know, to address risk liability, but also ensure that they're, you know, they're agreeing to maintain it, to keep it clean, operated accordingly. Once it's approved, then we would go place the barricades between, you know, blocking off the, the two parking stalls, assuming they take two parking stalls, and establish the cover over those barricades. And then, once that's established, then they could begin creating their, their dining space. And again, we would have follow up if needed, but it would be, once the barricades are in place, it would then be their space to be able to start occupying and modifying as they desire.
Yeah, and I guess in addition to all that, you know, my main concern would be the safety of the, of the participants. Will there be like speed limit signs or how that work? Is there any other adjustments on Main Street that you'll be making? Or is it just basically putting, putting in the parklets or the barricades and leaving the rest up to the business owner?
We, we were not proposing any, any, you know, reduction in speed limit.
Yeah, it's pretty slow there already, right?
It's pretty slow on Main Street.
It should be.
There are other jurisdictions and Long Beach being one of them where they haven't reduced the speed on a much busier street than us. And I, I think we're in a good position because of the fact that most people drive Main Street at a very, you know, very low rate of speed for a multitude of reasons. Sometimes they can't go any faster because of the amount of traffic. Other times it's because they're taking in the, you know, they're taking in what, what they see. It's, you know, it's a very dynamic three blocks to drive. But we didn't, we didn't see the need for that to be reduced. I know that some cities have done that. I, one of our restaurateurs pointed out to me.
The last time again.
Okay, well, hold on for a minute.
Les, are you there?
I'm sorry, I guess, I guess I dropped off again, my apologies.
Dropped off again, go ahead.
Having some network issues.
Yeah, I've never had that problem here, that's why I usually stay here in my office. My apologies, I, I'm sorry, Mike, I hopefully answered your question.
Yeah, yeah, I had one more, just briefly, the, the revisiting of the parklets in six months. I think it might not be a bad idea to revisit it a little bit sooner than that. You know, just depending on how, how everything is going and, and, and stuff. And I was wondering too, are, are the permits or the parklets or any of this stuff, is it tied to the future? Any future governor orders because we know how dynamic the situation is. And, and I guess it could change every, you know, every day. So i- is it tied to that or how does that work?
What we proposed is a, is a six month window, but we certainly could modify that to be in line with, with such. I get, I think the concern or interest was to not have it sooner than that, only because, to be honest, we don't, I don't anticipate that in the next six months. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm no expert in this area, but I don't think it's going to change enough favorably to get beyond a, a maybe allowance for fifty, up to 50% occupancy in, in restaurants at most over the next six months. But we certainly could have, you know, I'm, we're open to, if, if council would like to have that revisited sooner, certainly could do that. However, if, if some of the, the restaurants invested into this space and did more than just chairs and whatnot, you know, the concern or question was how to amortize out that cost that they would, from that investment.
No, that makes total sense, and I, I was just thinking of it as far as the, what's working and what's not working type of approach, you know, just, just to kind of get, get an update, if you will, not, not to change anything particularly, but just kind of a.
We, and we certainly could provide updates as frequently as you'd like, it could be, you know, monthly, quarterly. Be more than willing to do that.
I could just call up, call you up on the phone and ask you to, so, and I'll be down there, obviously. So this is primarily for Main Street and Ocean Avenue then, is that what we're, we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
I have no other questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Masalavet, did you have any questions?
Yes, I do. The, the part that this money is not going to be used outside of Maine and Ocean. And I understand what you're saying about private property and their parking spaces, but, and using their parking spaces for outdoor eating. But those parking spaces are there because we required them. Is there some way that we could work with those property owners to get them to allow their restaurant tenants to have parklets in their parking lots? I, I know one, one has connected with the city already and, you know, there, there's a lot of other shopping centers around that could do the same. And, but they haven't, is there any way that we can connect up and encourage them to take a look at our regs and try and make it work in their, in their parking lot?
I, I would be more than willing to talk to, you know, to any property manager or owner about, you know, in, about this. At least in the, in the few that I have interacted with. And I'll, I'll, I'll call out one of them that had to do with the shops at Rossmore and, and one of our newest restaurants up there. It was a fairly straightforward process, and in a matter of days, they were up and operating. That, that property manager was quite supportive of, of that. And I think it's a great example of what they did. But if there are others that are having, if there are concerns and there's anything we can do, I can do to, to converse with them about that and ease any of their concerns, definitely more than willing to do that.
Yeah, I, I'm wondering, the little food court over on the Ralph's side of the street. Yeah, they might be able to jerry rig something in there so that they could do outside seating as well. There's some patio by Starbucks and that other, the Mexican Rubio's and then the Greek Place. There should be enough room to have outside seating there. I don't know if they have, I didn't drive by there, but I think we ought to encourage that property manager, if they haven't already been approached, to connect with their tenants and do something like that.
I can definitely look into that, I was just up there today and they have not done anything at that location.
Yeah.
I only saw one tenant and that was Islands that, that, that has done something that got in ahead of us a little bit, but they, they've done something there.
Yeah, they're not out in the parking lot though, they, they took away the, their walkway.
Yeah, they, they've, they've got something there on the, on the east side within part of the parking, but, but I'd be more than willing to reach out to, you know, to a representative from that. And, and, you know, talk with them about, they may not be aware of, of our, you know, our program and what we're allowing right now.
They probably aren't. You know, they're, they're not going to be local people, so those are all the chain stores. Anyway, that's another thing to think about. And to get down to the, some of the physical issues, the green carpet, is that something that might have? I would much prefer to see the green carpet there than to be sitting on asphalt. But does that have anything to do maybe with ADA requirements? I don't know if it is a problem. And I'm also concerned with stepping down the curbs if they don't build a platform. And I, I'm not advocating building platforms by any means, but is there another way to avoid having a curb to go up and down? Not only for handicap people, but for the servers too? Going up and down, I'd sure hate to see them trip.
There, there are options, I mean, there, there are ramps that can be rented or, or probably reasonably priced in construction to provide a safer environment if that is, is chosen. Again, from my observations and I, I, I made my recommendation or provided the report based on what, what I have seen the last couple of weeks, visiting a number of cities. And surprisingly, most cities are not providing any, any options. And they are leaving it up to, to the restaurateurs to figure that out.
Yeah. Well, maybe they know their customers best, but.
I, I do want to mention though, that we are, we will be requiring that, that there has to be a table, at least, at least a table available that is ADA compliant. So that could be a table that's already within a, you know, on the sidewalk that's been established already or will be established. Or they would have to write a ramp, if not a platform, to ensure that, that at least, at least a table is ADA compliant.
Okay. All right, those are my only thoughts at the moment. Thanks for all your hard work, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Moore, do you have any questions?
Yes, I'd like to also thank Les and the city for looking at all of the options. I think you're doing a terrific job so far, given our constraints and all the changes that keep happening. I know it's more complex than a lot of people think with Coastal Commission and the insurance issues. And there are a lot of different pieces to deal with. I went down to Main Street a few times and I did not see much activity on electric at the seating area. So I agree, moving to Eisenhower Park as you proposed tonight is a good move. Also, I, and Sandra and Joe already asked about outside of Main Street, but is there, you're worked with Haf's Hut. Can we market a little bit to the other restaurants in the, in those malls that we, that they're allowed to serve outside?
Absolutely, certainly could, and we have a, we have a very good relationship with the property management team for that particular project, and we could reach out and talk with them about what we could do jointly to, you know, advocate for that and could do the same across the street as well and, and with, and also with a few other of our shopping centers here in the community. But yeah, that's a great idea, we certainly could reach out and see what we could do to promote and advocate this even more.
Yeah, some of them might not realize that they're allowed to, maybe they, that would, that would be a nice thing. On, on the parking, what options are there to, to? I, I guess now that you're not going to have the parking on electric, I mean, I mean, the, the tables and chairs and electric in Maine, will that free up more parking in that lot there?
Yeah. Yes, we would no longer be occupying that. We do have a, a storage container and a portable restroom that would have to remain until they can be picked up. But we wouldn't be limiting any of the parking. The only thing I would mention that, that has been requested of us is non-restaurant wise, we did have one of the fitness studios ask for utilization of a few of those parking spaces for an early morning workout class. But it's early morning prior to really any use being seen in any of those spaces. But other than that, which has not been granted, other than that, you know, there would not be any limitations to that, that parking lot.
And someone mentioned to me there used to be parking on Electric Avenue. Is that a possibility on both, both sides of the street?
Well, we, I'd have, we'd have to look into that and probably report back to you as to if we could do that. I, I don't know off the top of, off the top of my head.
And have you thought about like parking at the beach? Maybe loosening up that to allow a few hours free if we're gonna take up parking on Main Street?
Yeah, again, we have not looked into that, but we certainly could and report back to you.
Okay. And what about non-operating restaurants like Waltz Wharf and Beechwood? Are, are those excluded from your accounts of parking spaces that would be occupied?
Yeah, we know we had done, we, the information I provided you this evening accounted for both of those being closed.
Okay. And how quickly can we make this happen, then the summer's going quick?
Yeah, great question. We've, assuming approval tonight, we'll be ordering the barricades, the rental, the barricades right away. We'll have to make some minor modifications to the paperwork we have. I would say by Monday, Tuesday, absolutely latest, absolute latest, we'll have the application available. And again, we'll be processing them as we have them with the others within a timely manner. So it could, it could be as soon as, as Thursday or Friday next week that, that these spaces could be available for, for restaurants to use.
Okay. And I mean, I, I heard from one restaurant that two spaces just will not help that much. Is, is there any harm in having three spaces versus two?
Well, the one challenge would be if we calculated at three spaces, it obviously increases that number a third, so it'd go up to 66 spaces. We'd have to revisit that with the Coastal Commission, that would be one of my, my primary questions and concerns is with regards to the additional, the space, you know, those additional spaces being utilized. So that would be the one challenge is whatever we would allow for, one, we'd have to make sure is available for all. And again, that would increase it up to 66, up to, you know, potential of 66 spaces, and we'd have to revisit that matter with the Coastal Commission.
How quickly does that work when you ask the Coastal Commission?
Well, it went fairly quick with this last one, but there was some, there was a little, there was a little bit of question and concern with regards to the number of, the number of spaces being utilized or taken out of, of use, if you would. I think namely because those are, those are non-paid spaces, they're free spaces, if you will. So again, it, it probably would be within a matter of, of a two to three days, two to three business days, we should be able to converse and have an answer back.
If, if you combine that with allowing some leeway on the beach parking and the other lots, would that accommodate the Coastal Commission?
I, I, I honestly don't know, I'd want to, I'd want to reserve that for a conversation with them because I, I don't want to make any assumptions with that.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. I had just, just a couple, my question was in regard to the covers. Okay, thank you. I had just, just a couple. My question was in regard to the covers. That, that we'd be putting over there, how long would it take to, to do that, to order those up?
So we've already been looking into a preliminary design and it was some, it's something that we can construct in-house and I've already talked with our team about being able to do it, so if everything goes well, we should be able to have those ready to go about the same time as, as being able to place the barricades out a latter part of next week. A little bit of time, there's, obviously there's a number of barricades, we're probably talking around, if everybody used, if everybody to, did an outdoor dining space, it's about seventy barricades. So it may take a little bit of time, but we have a, we have crews ready to go that could put the, you know, put these together fairly quickly.
Okay. My other question, let's see, was, was just a comment. I do know that Old Ranch Town Center has kind of some space up there where they have tables. I think it would be nice to, to try to get something going up there because they do have a, a little bit of extra space. I've also noticed that Denny's has some tables set out in, in their area there in the center on Westminster Avenue and I've been driven past Hoff's several times in the last few days and they seem to be busy with, busy with diners and even look like there were people waiting there. So that one seems to be very successful going there, so. And I want to thank you too, Les, for all the, I'm sure, hours and hours and hours that you have put on, put in on this and I, I appreciate it and I'm sure our small businesses appreciate it too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. So are we taking, are we ready for a motion on this or were we gonna hear anything about the other, the other businesses? Okay, did somebody want to make them, make the motion to approve?
I would just offer a couple of quick comments.
Okay, sure, Joe.
Yes, with regard to the, the parking spaces. I have heard, received some emails from businesses who are, of course, terribly concerned that any parking spaces that are removed from the Main Street inventory is is not good. My response in general to the concern about the number of spaces being taken and whether it's, aside from the coastal commission, of course, that with the closure of approximately six businesses already. One of which, of course, being Walt's Wharf, there's a number of parking spaces that are not being used or not going to be used by those customers that would have been going to those businesses specifically. So I think that, and it's been my observation of, you know, kind of patrolling Main Street at least once or twice a day, that we got plenty of parking. And that should be the, really the least of our worries. I understand the coastal commission is looking at it through a different prism. But I think we should take into account what the consequences are if we don't go ahead with this plan. I would maintain that if we lose more restaurants, that will negatively affect the businesses that are not restaurants. And I would definitely support the idea of allowing our local fitness businesses to utilize other areas of city property, whether it be Eisenhower Park or a parking lot area that they would not have to get a new permit or, you know, any other kind of review to give them the opportunity of being open, not of expanding their business, but being open. And I think that's the approach that I, I believe that the city and the council and staff are taking. Is that we're in a different mode now. This is not about enhancements and anything else. It's about helping our businesses survive. So, you know, I strongly urge that we move ahead with this and I appreciate the fact that that Les has prepared this in such a way that it allows us to look at the other areas, whether it's barbering or hair cutting and so forth, as well as the gyms. Thank you.
It's Mayor Sisarsek. I just want, I'm just wondering if we could hear from other council members if three parking spaces, if we, if we re-approach coastal with three parking spaces with some accommodations at the beach, if, if that makes sense. I'd just like to hear from other council members on that.
Oh, okay. Did, did someone, does someone have a, a comment on that?
I have an opinion on that.
Okay.
I, I think I'd like to go with the three, with the two parking spaces. Approach coastal commission, ask them how they feel about it. And in a few months, if it looks like it's overwhelming, an overwhelming need for that other parking space, then we'll have coastal's buy-in at least. And we could begin to consider it then. But I'd like to try this two parking space size first and give it a chance to work.
Okay, thank you. Did someone else have a comment?
I would comment. I, while I, I absolutely don't disagree with Councilman Moore's opinion. I, I've talked to a few of the restaurants myself who were really adamant about wanting three and even four spaces. You know, being concerned about the number of, of tables that, a number of patrons they could serve with just two spaces. But I'm torn by the fact that, you know, as Les is telling us that, you know, the percentage of the increase in the number of spaces taken would be fairly significant and may raise the ire of the coastal commission. However, I, I appreciate, you know, the point of, can't we talk to the coastal commission? Although I, I think it's always dangerous to talk to them about anything. And, and merely try to make the point that because of the governor's orders, which look like they're going to last quite a while, our restaurants have zero inside seating. And that, that to even exceed, you know, the allowance of the two spaces, you know, is not going to make them wealthy. It may help them survive to be able to serve the visitors that are coming into the town to utilize our beach and other amenities that we are obligated, you know, to provide and, and of course willingly provide, so. I think that if we could sort of lay the groundwork with the coastal commission at least, and if as time goes by, if it increasing to three spaces only means that the, the barrier is increasing horizontally, meaning if it only meant that you were going to need another barrier, which could be done in a more, you know, orderly fashion as opposed to having to try and do what we're doing now and let's get all these barriers, get them out there and get the, the parklets going. I would not be upset at all if we were to be able to on an individual basis, let's say, allow a business, one of the restaurants to, you know, to expand by a space. But keep in mind, which is also tempering, you know, my opinion, is that you know, if we suddenly or not suddenly find ourselves in a situation where other retail businesses on Main Street are saying, well, wait a minute, you know, I'm struggling here in general, you know, what if I take one space and I put out a, an area to display my shoes and so people can come and try on shoes? You know, I don't want to create a swap meet atmosphere, I think that would be counterproductive, but starting with two spaces, you know, we're kind of prepared for it, we know how many barriers we need to order, we know how many we have to cover. And you can always, you know, you can always add if it works out that we have the space. And, you know, not every restaurant, you know, would necessarily require more than two spaces. It might just say, I'm fine with the, using two, so that is my opinion about that.
Yeah, this is Mike, I would concur with that and I think, you know, move forward immediately with the two, just to get it going and then maybe have the dialogue. Once we start moving and then we could also see how many restaurants are even participating. So if there's a lot, then there might be a little bit more cumbersome to add the third, but if there's, you know, minimal, then it might be a good opportunity, but definitely keep it as an option sooner than later, but I think moving forward with the two would be a good, good start and looks like we're, are all set to go without any hiccups, so. Thank you.
Okay. I think, I think I heard what you said, I think I heard what you said and I think I'd agree, I, I, just to get things moving, I think I'd go with two. In the meantime, maybe consult the coastal commission, fill out what, what their opinion is on, on adding to it and if we, we could move forward on that as we go along, that's what my opinion is, so. Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Adopt a resolution seventy fifty-one, okay, and there's a second. All right, city clerk, could you please take the role?
Yes, Mayor Sisarsek, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mayor Pro temp Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Five zero, thank you very much. Okay, this concludes the open session portion of the meeting. We will now convene to close session. Thank you all for attending, thank you.
Thank you.